What did it work?
Go first, Ivan.
Yeah.
Would you call the row, please?
Robert Kraus. Jason Blair.
Here.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Terry Cavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. I have a proclamation to read here today that I was asked to read. Whereas the National Night Out of October, or excuse me, out of 2012 will be observed the night of August the 7th, 2012. And whereas the National Association of Town Watch and Target are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 7th, 2012 entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 29th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Moore to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country by promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas it is essential, all citizens of the City of Moore be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of Moore. And whereas the police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Not now. Therefore, I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor of City of Moore, do hereby proclaim August 7th, 2012 as National Night Out in the City of Moore, Oklahoma. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention the events that we'd be having. One would be on Friday, Friday, August the 3rd at Target in the parking lot. And we'll have some displays from the Police Department. Like, everybody come out and see that. The motorcycle team will be doing a demonstration, the K-9, several other items. It'll be Operation ID and free child ID kits. And then on August 7th will be the actual National Night Out. And that's where officers will visit certain participating neighborhoods to discuss crime prevention and just any other questions they might have that, you know, for the Police Department to help out quality life issues and things like that. So I just wanted to let everyone know about that. And if they want any more information, it is on the city's website. So.
Okay. We all, I think all of us participated in that last year, didn't we?
That was fun.
If you guys want to do it again, we can, I guess. So.
It was fun.
Yeah, we have 21 neighborhoods so far.
All right.
Twenty-one so far.
That's great.
That is great.
We might have to split up this time.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Good. Thank you.
Item two is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held July 2nd, 2012. Item B is approve resolution number 74512 establishing the 911 emergency telephone fee rate for the calendar year 2013. Item C is approve and enter local agreement with the Board of County Commissioners in Cleveland County for grading drainage and surfacing of certain streets within the city. Item, and by the way, we do appreciate those guys. They help us a lot. Item D is accept a 25-foot utility easement located in the southeast quarter of Section 22, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 19th Street and west of Max Morgan Boulevard to serve Royal Rock, Section 4. Item E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2011, 2012 in the amount of $5,409,878.51.
Move to approve?
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these? The reason the claims were so high, as I understand, we paid two bond, three bond payments?
Three bond payments.
So you kind of messed up the numbers. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on these items? If not, get the copy of the vote.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is consider resolution number 74412 updating the alternative fuel vehicle transition plan and submitting the same to the Oklahoma Department of Commerce State Energy Office for the 2012 Energy Efficiency Grant.
Mayor and Council, you may recall that we adopted about a year ago a alternative fuel vehicle transition plan. It was also related to an energy efficiency grant. Since that plan was adopted, we have added three CNG sanitation trucks, five hybrid electric sedans, and we have been successful in locating a CNG fueling station within our city limits. So we are making a lot of progress moving forward from 2010, or 2011, I guess. And now it's time for us to apply for another grant application that would be funding the difference between CNG and traditional diesel for two sanitation trucks. The amount that we would be applying for is $63,000, which is the incremental difference. The city would be responsible for the remainder of the cost, and that would count as towards our match that's required. Part of the requirements for applying for this grant is to update our plan, even though it was just approved last year. So we went ahead and updated that, and it found some pretty interesting results. We did use 2012 as the new baseline. We have, since 2010, we have added five additional vehicles to our overall fleet. We do have three sanitation, three CNG sanitation trucks and five hybrid electric sedans. And it's interesting to note that our fuel costs only rise at a rate of 11% last year, which is much better than the previous year, which it rose more than 33%. So we're now starting to slow our growth that we are paying for our cost in fuel. And just by adding those two CNG trucks, we have an estimated savings of just under $40,000, just for those two trucks. So for the update to the to the plan, I did do a 2013 snapshot, which basically includes the two trucks that we are applying for to be added to our fleet. I did speak with Richard Sandofer, and he said that they would be replacing two traditional trucks. So we would have a total of five CNG sanitation trucks. And with that, our gasoline consumption would reduce by about 6,000 gallons annually, which is great news, because of course that means money that we are able to save. And then I went ahead and did a further projections out for two separate years, 2015 and 2020, under three different scenarios. The first scenario would be just converting CNG sanitation trucks only. Second scenario would be increasing our fuel efficiency of our light duty cars only. And a third option would be to do a combination of the fuel efficiency and CNG transition. And so interestingly enough, if we had to have a choice between CNG transition or fuel efficiency, the fuel efficiency results would provide us with more savings. However, the problem is, is that fuel efficiency is very driver-specific. So it's linked with specific driving behavior, and that's very difficult to manage or control. So probably would recommend that. However, the third option, which is combining the CNG and the fuel efficiency, seems to be obviously the best choice that we have. In doing that, in 2015, if we had seven CNG sanitation trucks and increased the miles per gallon of our light duty vehicles from 15 miles per gallon to 20, we would be seeing a significant savings. But in 2020, if we went ahead and converted 12 of our trucks to CNG sanitation trucks and increased the light duty miles per gallon to 30, that's where we'd be seeing obviously the highest amount of savings. And doing all of that, we would be spending about $389,000 per year on gasoline, which is really back to 2009 levels. So that would be great in 2020. Of course, this is assuming a lot of different assumptions, like that the price of gas doesn't go much higher than it has been, and also that our number of vehicles in our fleet stay the same. So obviously, those two things probably wouldn't happen in the year 2020. But that kind of gives you an idea of what we should be shooting for. So obviously, the plan would recommend purchasing the two sanitation trucks as CNG as one way to help us to our ultimate goal. I guess the other side of the coin would be that we should be looking at the higher fuel efficiency cars for our light duty and try to increase that whenever we can. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Did you figure out what the savings would be if we converted all the police cars as well?
I actually have never looked at that, simply because at the time, we didn't have a CNG station that was convenient and waiting for some direction from the police chief, so.
Okay. Because I would think that would be significant. And the truck drivers say there's no loss in power, apparently, on this. Is that correct? When they, when they actually pick up the truck?
As far as I'm aware, but I would probably defer to.
Is it, it's the same? Okay. Great. Thank you, Glenn. Anybody else? Thanks. Appreciate it.
Motion to approve?
All right. Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Thank you, Bo. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion on this item? All right. Would you call for the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number four is consider approval of a request for proposals for banking services.
Mayor and Council, I emailed you our RFP today. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but our request here is to ask for banking services, a new banking services agreement with a local bank. The city has had our operating account with First Fidelity Bank in excess of 20 years, and they've provided great service. We're not unhappy with them, but we believe that we should look to see if we can get better fees, lower fees. And there's some additional services we would like to add. I'm confident they can provide them, but there's a couple of things we're looking at that I think we need to add to our services. One is the sweep account. I believe we need to have that capability of our funds. And possibly a lockbox account. But there's just some additional things we want to look at, and we believe that if we ask for proposals from our local banks, that we can receive better rates on the fees that we're currently paying. Okay?
Do we need to take a motion on this, Randy? Request? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
So move.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Terry Cavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a budget supplement to the city general fund in the amount of $535,000.
Mayor and Council, this item is a request to increase the general fund budget for the fiscal 11, 12 year. The, we believe that we have most of here-in expenses by now, and the budget just needs this supplement. The year-end spending was a little bit more than I estimated, but this should take care of everything for last fiscal year.
Okay. And we're taking this from MPWA, right?
No, it's just to supplement the general fund.
Okay.
The revenues are there.
The revenues from sales tax is basically.
Yes, most of them is sales tax. This is just to increase our expenditure appropriation level.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Appreciate it. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number six is consider approval of a contract with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, for Phase Two of the waste load allocation study at the Canadian River in an amount not to exceed $190,167, and supplement the budget accordingly.
Mayor, I ask Satish Dasrathy, our engineer who works with us on this, to be available, answer any questions, and just give you a very brief update on what's going on with this and how it is that we became involved with this and what Phase One was about.
Steve and I just cringed when we saw this number the other day. It's like, are you kidding me?
There's a number of communities in central Oklahoma that are participating in this study. If we were to do the study by ourselves, it would cost a lot, you know, about the same versus there's Lexington, Moore, Mustang, Newcastle, Noble, Tuttle, Oklahoma City, and Purcell. They're all participating in the program to do, complete this study. This is a study of the Canadian River for a 62 and a half mile stretch, about 100 kilometers, from Highway 81 all the way down to Purcell. It's, we have some new standards in the Canadian River for the beneficial uses. It's designated a warm water aquatic community now. And so now we're doing a study to see how much waste can all these communities put into the river and still maintain water quality standards in the river. And the study is needed in this, in this format where all the communities are coming together and working together, trying to attain this water quality standards.
All the communities were, were brought together at a meeting some time ago by DEQ and, and sort of given the opportunity to participate by DEQ.
Given the opportunity.
Given.
We were given the opportunity to participate by DEQ. You all recall that we upped our allocation several years ago when we started with the, uh, planning for the new wastewater treatment plant, and upped our allocation at the river sufficient for our needs. But the concern was that we had primarily is to make sure that our concerns and our allocation was not going to be affected by what could happen as a result of this study. If there's any of the city's allocation, that how much waste load they can put into the river. And this is the Canadian River over west of here, where our discharge is for our wastewater treatment plant. I think most of you know that. But it's, it's expensive for us, but, but what Satish was saying is true as well. If, if we had to do this on our own, which we certainly wouldn't want to do, it would be hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that is at least being spread out by all the users up and down the river. We want to also make sure by doing this that our weight, that our discharge permit that DEQ has to approve does not have any onerous restrictions on it that we can't meet. So it's kind of one of those things we don't really want to do, but we have to, have to do.
Yeah, the study started a couple of years ago, and they're finished calibrating the model, and verification is complete now. I think they'll finish doing the model and doing the allocation by December of this year, and hopefully by January or February next year, we should know that our allocation and our discharge limits hopefully have not changed as a result of the study.
Make a motion to approve the contract?
All right. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Any questions? When's our, when's our completion date of our plant?
Our completion date of our plant is currently November.
It's still, still November.
Uh, they, they're working diligently. There, we are about, to give you a brief status, we have expended about 80% of the money, which is about $35 million, and 35.5, something like that. And then they're moving along. We've bought a lot of, all the equipment we're supposed to purchase is here. Construction is going on quite well. But they've also had lots of problems because, because of the site constraints. They've had a lot of debris they're digging up everywhere they go. And that's kind of slowed them down a little bit. So I don't know if they'll be able to complete everything by November. They may have to stretch it a little bit, but they're working very hard trying to get it, get it all done.
Only get shut off November 1st. Finish your line.
We're, I'm ready for it to finish my first line.
That's a good encouragement, huh? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? No? Would you call for a vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. I'm so excited about that being finished. That's going to be so cool. Okay.
Absolutely is.
At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number seven is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held July 2nd, 2012. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2011, 2012 in the amount of $242,989.54.
Make a motion to approve?
All right. Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? Everybody get their claims questions answered. Any notes or changes to the minutes? We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavner?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number eight is receive a report from Eagle Consultants regarding proposed improvements to the Southeast 34th Street lift station and authorized payment in the amount of $30,267.17.
Mayor, again, Satish is here to give you a brief update on this report, engineering report. Just a little bit of a background. You all are aware that we built Southeast 34th Street Lift Station, which is between Sunny Lane and Bryant several years ago, really before that area began to develop significantly out there. We've had a few issues with that, with that lift station over time. We've added a new outfall line from that lift station, a forced main. We've done some other improvements, but we're still having some issues with the lift station. We've had some bypasses out there. We've had several new subdivisions that have developed sort of on the downstream side of that lift station. And then there's lift stations lifting back to the lift station out there. And there's significantly more development out there than what was anticipated whenever the lift station was built. So I ask Satish to take a look at the options that we would have to look at upgrades to this. We've had some mechanical failure issues out there with regard to debris and that sort of thing coming down the lines. Just had some, some different problems out there. So we're not going to ask, we're not asking you to make any decisions tonight. We'll come back to you at a later date with recommendation on which one of these ways. There's four options that Satish will present briefly. And then we'll bring it back to you for approval at a later date. But we wanted to present the report basically to you tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, we've looked at several options, as Mr. Edie mentioned. The first option, the 34th Street Lift Station briefly was built about 10 years ago, and it's almost halfway through its useful life. Typically, these are designed for like a 20-year period. And along with it, the city has grown more than 20, 30% in the last 10 years. And there's a lot of growth that has occurred east of Sunny Lane and south of 34th Street that was really never taken into account when they originally designed this pump station. This pump station was supposed to handle everything north of 34th Street and then west of Sunny Lane. And then subsequent to that, we've added a number of subdivisions, like the Falls in the south, the cider farms, and Belmar, Belmar North, Joshua Landing, so many other, there's a lot of flow coming in. And the new, the interceptor was also replaced coming into this lift station. And each time it rains, it flushes a lot of debris at this lift station into the lifts, into the lift station. And then maintenance is a huge problem, because the operators got to go there and clean out all the debris from the pump station, and, and literally have to pump, pull the pumps a number of times. And I think we've had about three or four overflows as a result of backups in the system and the neighboring subdivisions. All the other subdivisions have pump stations that are pumping into the gravity line at the Falls as well as the cider farms. And then it gravities into the lift station. So the first option I've looked at, in all of the options we're looking at, is to provide some sort of a screening device. What it does is putting some fine screens would protect our pumps from having debris getting caught in the pumps and getting lodged into, into the impeller and then, and then having the pump break down and for them to go down and having to pull all the pumps, pull the pumps each time. And there's, and so the first option is to put a screening device at the lift station and also put a lift station at cider farms and the Falls to pump the water during high flows, but gravity during regular periods. That would basically cost about $2.1 million to do, because, you know, installing a couple of screens. The second option we looked at was to just deepen the pump station. The pump station, when it was built, like I said, was never took into consideration that we would gravity from south of here, because topographically it drains away from this lift, you know, everything drains away. It's, everything is lower. So when you gravity flow, think back, in, in the Falls, we have lines that are as shallow as two and a half feet. So when it backs up, it doesn't take much for water to back up and overflow at these locations. And now we've added more pumps that are pumping into these gravity lines. So the option is to put some individual lift stations, you know, the first option was to put individual lifts. The second option is not do those lift stations, but deepen the lift station that's there now that would allow the, add additional pumps. So we'd have the screening device and the, and the deepening of pumps, pump station by having a deeper wet well. That would give you an opportunity to get the water out of there pretty quick with additional pumps. And this option would cost about two and a half, 2.4 million dollars. And the third option is to look at, the world that we've presented is to do both, which is do the screening at the lift station 34th Street, deepen the lift station at 34th Street, and add pumps, pump stations at cider and add pumps, pump stations at cider farms and the Falls. That would give you the most level of protection, uh, that would prevent any backups in, in these areas or overflows, and as a result of, you know, we'd not cause violations to the DEQ and so on and so forth. So, and that would cost about two point nine million dollars. And those are the three options we've kind of generally looked at. And the other thing that would also help is the screen flow would then, we know about sixty percent of the flow comes into this lift station and, and, you know, in the city. A lot, it's, so it's a large lift station. A lot of the flow comes in here. Once it pumps, pumps out of here, it goes to the treatment plant. And so, you know, we are, we have screening devices at the new treatment plant, similar screens, but, uh, it would actually help at operation and maintenance costs at the new treatment plant as well by putting screens here. So, it's really badly needed here. It's just, uh, at what level of protection does the city want in terms of preventing any overflows and bi- bypasses in the collection and pump station system, so.
Will you be bringing us a recommendation?
Uh, we will be bringing recommendation. We're trying to get wastewater treatment plant construction completed and get all that behind us before we kind of venture out into another big project.
Will we have any money left from that project to possibly figure this?
There, there could be. Um, don't know for sure quite yet, but there, there very well could be. Um, and I noticed Terry, whenever he made the sixty percent, uh, that lift station is way out there. But the fact is that it, just about everything virtually east of I thirty-five sewage goes out there, and it goes through that lift station, is pumped back over the ridge, back over to the treatment plant that's on the way, um, just off of the highway. So, that's, the importance of this lift station is, is incredible. And if we have any major, major catastrophes out there, we're in a world of hurt.
When you have the, to, when there is the overflow and you have to do a cleanup, what does that entail? Is that actually going up and removing dirt, putting fresh dirt down, or, or what costs are involved in the cleanup?
It, it really just depends on the magnitude of it. Often, most often, whenever this, this one has an overflow, there's a, there's a significant flow of rainwater going on at the same time, so it dilutes and goes with rainwater. But, uh, we still report those things to DEQ, um, and it's, we're not supposed to be doing that. You're not supposed to release, um, sewage, of course, into the environment, so that's a violation of DEQ's codes. And it, we're not under any kind of an order or consent order out there. If we don't take some action in the future, we quite likely will be. But at this point, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time, we're fine, but we have to plan for that catastrophic event, uh, that, that could happen.
Really, that lift station is more than just serving that little sector?
Well, absolutely, it's.
Almost the entire east side.
East side, yeah, sixty percent of the community.
Like I mentioned, I think we've had, uh, through three or four bypasses, but we've had lots of close calls. By talking to Robert and the maintenance staff, I'm hearing, you know, there's, there've been lots of close calls where
This is like a.
They've just kind of avoided, uh, you know, disaster.
The main upstream from that, there's like thirty inches, isn't it, a thirty-inch?
Thirty-inch line.
Main coming in upstream. So, we've got two by fours, we've got, I don't know what all they found out there in that main, but it's, it's horrendous what comes down through there, and there's nothing that prevents it from just that debris just from hitting the pumps and the impellers and the motors and all that, and just, it messes things up big time, so.
And the way the pump is designed also is, uh, right now it's set up where the pump, the top of the pump is almost at the floor line of the thirty-inch, which doesn't help it very much. And, uh, so by deepening the lift station, you would lessen the effect of some of that, and adding additional pumps would get the water out of there sooner, and then these older pumps that are there could still be very useful to pump the water levels down, especially during wet weather periods, so.
But we will, to answer your question, we will bring back the recommendation.
Will I make a motion? Like, we, you save the report and offer a respite?
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on it? It's like, we spend a lot of money on sewer. People just have no idea what things cost here. I think, it's amazing. Would you call for the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number nine is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held July second, two thousand twelve. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve in the amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars, forty-eight cents.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any other discussion on these claims or questions? Everybody get their questions answered, and any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote?
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Item ten is roll call. Would you call it roll, please?
Robert Kraus? Jason Blair?
Here.
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
David Roberts?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Terry Cavanagh?
Here. Item eleven is consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held June eighteen, two thousand twelve.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Would you call it roll, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. As the record reflected, all the members that were present before are still present. Item twelve is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Okay. Item B is item from the city council or trustees.
I just have one, one thing.
Sure.
I was, um, thinking about Twelve Street, and is there a possibility, I, I don't know how it works, but I, I've noticed, uh, some communities, and there'll be a sign, a blue sign that will say, "Take this exit for," and then list restaurants or motels, and with the Twelve Street exit gone, I guess this came up because of Falls Creek, and people texting me, "Hey, how do we get to wherever?" You know, to put that, if you want to go there, you'd be best to exit at Twenty-seventh Street. Is there, uh, I'm, I'm sure that when all of that happened, y'all looked into that, or?
I think those, the signs are already there, I think.
Are they?
But it's on north, it's north of, but past the city limits, actually, before you actually get into more, before you turn on.
Well, but I'm, maybe I'm trying to think whether it's there or not. We have some for like Nineteenth Street. There are those signs that say.
Nineteenth, but, you know, Twelve and Twelve.
Right, but.
Deidre had some information on that. She, she actually brought that up one time at council, and we talked about it.
ODOT, ODOT regulates it. ODOT
Yeah.
Has to approve it, and ODOT leases them out, and little signs and all that, um.
Yeah, as a business, you have to pay for that.
And there are, there are, I know there are there for the hotels are there, um. I'm almost certain there's signs there too, southbound for the restaurants.
Come on, we're driving now.
Seen them, I've seen them on in Des Moines.
Yeah.
Well, let me double check on that, but we, this did come up, um, because they cut off the direct exit ramp, and you got to get off to South Twenty-seventh, as you know. It came up, um, we can check on it again, and, and I'll do that, um, see what there is, and see if there's any more that can be erected for the other businesses. One thing they, that they need to do, need to be aware of, is that they're, they lease them out per month, a little, or per year, I'm not sure what it is, but they're not inexpensive.
No, okay.
Um, and several of our local businesses, even off of Nineteenth Street, whenever they became aware of how much it costs to advertise on those signs, because you'll notice that they're almost, they're all national companies that are on those signs.
Right.
They, they couldn't advertise, couldn't do it. But, uh, we'll, again, we'll look and see whether there's any others that can be put up out there, see if there's any opportunity for it.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
This is the first meeting since, uh, Fourth of July. I want to say thanks to all the people that worked out to the park. Everybody seemed to enjoy it. Got lots of good responses, I'm sure. So, anybody else? No? Any honors from the city manager or trust manager?
Just a couple to bring you, make you aware of a couple of these projects out there. One is the new traffic signals over at Fifth and I thirty-five. We got a lot of calls about those, um, today, and understandably so. Uh, they're operational, but they're not operating correctly. They had some difficulties with the controller and all of that whenever they started trying to operate, get them operable. Um, so the, this, over the weekend, they were on, but they weren't working properly and holding people up quite a bit unnecessarily. So, we're aware of that, to working with the engineers and the traffic people to, to get those signals operating correctly, and also, it is, it's going to be different over there, though. It is different from what people are used to. There's going to be some different turning movements and that sort of thing than what's been over there, I think, hopeful, and I think that once, um, they're finished and they get them operational the way they're supposed to operate, that, that's going to improve that intersection over there. But, um, again, um, bear with us on that, and we've also gotten a few complaints about Twelve Street, um, the construction over there. I think we mentioned this the last time as well, but, um, we've, uh, had a delay, based on one of the utilities, uh, not being, um, moved. I certainly apologize for the inconvenience. It's a, it's a, it's a problematic project at best because of all the traffic that's over there, um, and all the houses and all the businesses, and, and we're going to do everything we can to try to minimize the impacts over there. And I'm also told, Stan, am I right, that, uh, the utilities are, lines are supposed to be moved sometime this week? So, the contractors can get back to working, and, uh, they've not, completely not been working because they've been doing the intersection there at the west ramp, uh, southbound ramp, but, um, not any work up and down the rest of the project, so hopefully that'll start, um, into this weekend and next week, getting them going again on that project, so. And, uh, Deidre wasn't here tonight, or we'd have had a report for the Economic Development Authority, but I've put some things in the email that I sent to you today, but there's some really exciting things out there on the horizon as far as the development. It's just, really, things are beginning to, uh, gin up again nicely as far as, um, some potential commercial development out there that, uh, is exciting, even over what's being, uh, built on the ground today. So, that's, uh, that's just a nice opportunity, and I can, can't say publicly, but if you want to know some more, I can talk to you.
We just wanted to know if they'll bring in two point nine million dollars to do the sewer plant. Tax revenue for three years.
Eventually, yeah.
Good, that's what we like.
That's all I have in there.
All right. Next item is adjournment.
So, move.
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Would you call the roll, please, for adjournment?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming. That was too easy.
I'm glad to hear that it's not finalized there on the line.